Good evening, everybody. We want to welcome you to the Board of Education meeting for the Enlarged City School District of Middletown for Tuesday, July 31st, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order and remind everybody that this agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they're made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. Senora Romero.
Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final de la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice y nuevamente después de la reunión, en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito.
And we'd also like to remind everyone that translation and interpretation services are available during this meeting, and if you need immediate assistance, please let us know, and we'll be happy to accommodate you.
Nos gustaría recordar a todos los servicios de traducción e interpretación. Están disponibles durante esta reunión. Si necesita asistencia, por favor, infórmenos y con gusto le ayudaremos.
And at this time, we ask everybody to please stand and remove your hats for our pledge of allegiance led by Dr. Patricia De Jesus.
[inaudible] Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing for a couple of moments. Silence led by Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. A number of moments of silence this evening, unfortunately. The first moment of silence is for Sharon Ellicott. Sharon Ellicott was a very valued member of the Monhegan staff who passed away very suddenly. I did not know Ms. Ellicott. I saw her in passing and said hello, but that was it. But from what I understand, and this is from Dominic Rudonia, the principal, she was a very dedicated colleague who touched the lives of many scholars and staff with warmth and commitment. The next moment of silence this evening is for Ms. Nancy Elts, the wife of Tom Elts, Sr. Tom Elts was a very valued member of the Buildings and Grounds staff. I went to school with Tom. I worked with Tom, a very, very skilled craftsman. His son Tommy Jr. is a district courier. They are then a district family. Nancy Elts was a person who loved children. She took care of many children. If a neighbor needed help babysitting, she was always there. It's estimated she took care of no less than 60 children. She played a very large role in her church community service. Family was very, very important to her. And if the visitation was any indication, there were a number of people from the district and from, without the district, who attended the visitation. So, very wonderful person. I met Nancy on a number of occasions, and I can't say enough good things about a very warm individual. The next moment of silence, and President Estrada pointed this out to me. One of our former students, a very famous student, Dr. David Alcheck, passed. At his passing, he was co-chief of the Hospital for Special Surgery. Dr. Alcheck evolved the process of the so-called Tommy John surgery. He made, in his words, it a bit more simple. He was a very warm person. I remember him as a student, a very excellent student. I had Dr. Alcheck, I had David as a social study, in social studies in what was A.J. Verraldi Junior High School at the time, which was this building, only about one-fifth the size. If I may read something from a member of the hospital staff, known for his technical brilliance and pioneering contribution to orthopedic surgery, Dr. Alcheck had a profound positive impact on our organization. His legacy endures among the thousands of grateful patients whose lives he touched with skill and compassion, among the many surgeons around the world who carry forward his knowledge and example. His contributions will continue to elevate the field and inspire us all. He will be dearly missed. And the final moments of silence this evening, another one of our students, Douglas Hutchings, Sr. Douglas Hutchings, the, one of the members of the Hutchings Insurance Agency. His dad, Roy, started this agency. Roy was very prominent in city government. He was an alderman, I believe, an alderman at large. And I also, I think he may have been mayor at one time of Middletown, not sure on that. But family was very important to Doug. His professional life, if I can quote, was marked by his deep integrity and quiet professionalism. His warm personal touch made his colleagues and customers feel valued, turning business relationships into lasting friendships. So, please remember these people and your thoughts and prayers. And if you hear from the first time, we do these moments of silence for our colleagues and our friends, out of respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Certainly, a lot of alumni that we lost with some profound impacts, not only locally but nationally as well. So, thank you, Mr. Perino. And now for our mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, Vice President Romero.
We strive to provide physically sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Vice President Romero. Roll call, Mrs. Montchere.
Dr. De Jesus.
Here.
Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Rett.
Here.
Ms. Romero.
Yeah.
Ms. Tobiasin. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Here.
Pastor Williams.
Also want to say hello to our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Tuttle, who's serving as Superintendent Pro Tem this evening, as our Superintendent, Ms. Creeden is on vacation, hopefully enjoying herself with her family. I need approval for tonight's agenda. So move. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Pastor, Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, how many we have? Seven? Six? Six, nothing. Can't count. If there are no objections, I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of July 1st, which is our rework meeting, the meeting minutes for the regular meeting minutes of July 1st, the special meeting of July 10th, and our workshop from July 17th. Need a motion? Moved by Dr. De Jesus, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion or amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero for all of them. I need approval for Personnel Memorandum 3A, Number 1, administrative. So move. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. I need approval for Instructional Personnel Memorandum 3B, Numbers 1 through 16. Moved by Dr. De Jesus, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. I need approval for Non-Instructional Personnel Memorandum 3C, Numbers 1 through 7. So move. Moved by Mr. Perino. Seconded by Vice President Romero. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. I need approval for Financial Memorandum 4D, Numbers 1 through 8. So move. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Dr. De Jesus. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. I need approval for Special Services Memorandum 3E, Numbers 1 and 2. So move on that. Moved by Mr. Perino. Seconded by Dr. De Jesus. Any questions? All those in favor?
Hold on, I'm sorry, they have a question.
Mr. Perino.
Sort of a comment, as many know, I read the IEPs, and I tell you, I'm not going to go over some of the comments tonight because you folks have to leave for Albany. But I'm very pleased with the way the year is going for many of the students in our special education program, and I'll elaborate on that at the next meeting.
Fantastic, and you do a great job. You've been doing that for many years now on behalf of the district, so we thank you. Any further discussion on Special Services Memorandum 3E, Numbers 1 and 2? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. I need approval for our change orders. There were several. Mr. Bartlett, can you go over some of them before I ask for a motion?
So, we have eight different change orders tonight. The first one is for mechanical. This is at the Twin Towers Addition Alteration Project, and it starts off with to provide and install additional high-performance butterfly valves to further enhance the flow adjustments and isolation capabilities of the geothermal system. The next is to provide and install additional fire dampers where the ductwork passes through the fire-rated walls and shaft. The next one in line is to provide FRP door framing finishes to match the existing finishes of the new windows. Then we have one for the flooring, to provide a concrete infill for recessed area of the flooring and mechanical room. The next is electrical, is to provide and install raceways, sleeves, pipes, stubs for clocks, speakers, data drops, card readers, and access points. And the other electrical is for Presidential Park, is a credit to close out the electoral contract on that job. And the last two are with the plumbing, is to, and they're both to reroute the domestic water supply lines in Area A, and the second one is to reroute the domestic water line in Areas N and S.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you.
I need a motion for all of the change orders. Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Mr. Perino. Are there any other questions for Mr. Bartlett? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. I need approval for the Administrator of District Resources and Operations.
Don't move on that.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Ms. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. I need approval of the District-wide Safety Plan for 2025-2026 school year. Moved by Vice President Romero, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Just want to make a comment. Thank you for all the work that's been put in there. I think Lenny puts it together correct, and the summary pages definitely help because that highlights the updates, because it is a plan that's over 200 pages long. So, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. We need approval to amend the Board of Education meeting schedule for 2025-26. So move on that. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Rett. The change in the Board of Education meeting schedule is that we are moving our Thursday, the October 23rd meeting, to Tuesday, October 21st, as most members will be leaving that Thursday to the New York State School Boards Conference down in New York. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Do you want to handle the policy?
Sure, let's do it.
Approvals? Okay, so I hand it over to Mr. Rett for the Policy Committee.
Okay, good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. Approval to discuss, waive, and second, the second reading of the policy recommended by NISP. All right, so moving right on along into that, may I have a motion to approve, to discuss, and waive the second reading of the policy recommended by NISP as presented?
Don't move on that.
Well, we're going to delete Policy 5321, use of the district credit card, and we're going to adopt Policy 8334, which is the use of the credit card in a different way.
So, do we need a first, a vote first to waive the second?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're doing Action Item J. J, yeah.
Yes.
And I think, okay. I think Mr. Perino had the motion. Right. And do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams.
Okay, any discussion? All right, discussion ensues. Discussion concluded, so let the voting begin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes or denied? Motion passes. All right, be resolved in accordance with a review of the ECSDM's policy by NISP, and upon the recommendation of the Board of Education's Policy Committee, the full Board hereby adopts the following policies with the nominal revision and delete the policy no longer needed, recommended by NISP, and reviewed by the Superintendent of Schools. Okay, the delete is the Policy 5321, use of district credit card, and replacing it with Policy 8334, use of the credit card. Okay, may I have a motion?
Don't move.
May I have a second? All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, so for the public's, so they understand the concept here. Typically, when we are approving new policy, there is required to be a first reading and a second reading. If there's been ample discussion and the Board is happy with the recommended policy, we vote to waive the second reading, so we're not reiterating what we've already done. So that's the reason why we had the initial vote. And then, you're going to be seeing a lot of these throughout the school year, because we've changed from Erie One Boces to the New York State School Boards Association being our new policymakers. So every once in a while, they'll shoot down some revisions to policy that Mr. Rett, who chairs the Policy Committee, takes a look at, and then they recommend these policies to the Board for approval.
Okay, so, moving rather along, may I have a motion?
So move on that.
Okay, and second, all right, okay. So, any discussions? All right, discussion ensues, discussion concluded. Let's begin the voting. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Mr.
I just want to, well, I guess I'll make a note of it now, that our policy, our next policy meeting is Wednesday, August 6th, at 3:00 PM. So I just want to call that to attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. And now for our favorite part of the meeting, our spotlight on excellence, with our recognition this evening of Mr. Howard Avery and Mr. Perino, it's all yours.
Like Howard, why don't you come on up to the podium right up there? And Chief, why don't you come up and you are going? Thank you. You're on what time are you?
I'm on high time now. Okay. Let's see. Let's see. Yeah, I don't think I'm on, am I on here?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see the light, I'm sorry. Well, this is a very positive event tonight, and I want to thank Chief Huwanshu for being with us tonight, and the Director of Recreation and Parks, Raylene Berthold, and of course, Mr. and Mrs. Howard Avery. And I'm going to give a little background of concerning Howard, and then I was going to read from the minutes, but since Raylene is here and the Chief is here, I'm going to let you talk about Howard a few minutes, okay? Well, I go way back with Howard, because he was a stu, he was a student of mine in Verraldi Junior High School. And Verraldi Junior High School, as I mentioned, was this building, only about one-fifth of the size. Although we had, at the height of it, we had 1,500 people in this, in this building, only two administrators, so that's it. Well, Howard, he graduated in 1971, and he worked for Buildings and Grounds from 1975 to 2008. And he worked in the custodial department. He also worked in Buildings and Grounds facilities itself, in masonry and carpentry, and any other jobs, electrical, any jobs that he was assigned to. A very good worker. He had various times, he had board time and hour time, but that's correct?
Correct.
Right, okay. That's our secret.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. And then he started with Parks and Recreation, I believe, from 2008 to 2022. And why don't you speak about Howard in that role, and the reason here, we're doing this, one of the reasons, recognize a valuable employee, but he received the key to the city. And it's, and it's my belief that he is the only employee, or former employee, of the Middletown School District who received the key to the city. So, you did some very important things, Howard, so who would like to start us off? Raylene, okay.
We were very lucky to have Howard on board. He came with a lot of skills when he came to us at the rec, whatever we needed, from janitorial to lock in the parks at night, when it's pitch black, going out there, locking everything up. Howard was amazing. He did whatever was needed of him. His hours were mainly in the evening, but he always made sure to come in and often carrying a nice Carvel ice cream cake for us ladies in the office. He is a charmer, and he knew the way to our hearts. But Howard was amazing. We, all, all the girls in the office, we developed a great friendship with him. We were happy and excited when he met Ruth, his lifelong partner and now wife, and we were all there to celebrate his wedding with Ruth, and Howard's like family to us, and we were very lucky to have him, and we're very lucky that we still get to see him around Middletown all the time, because he does have the key to the city now, so Howard's all over the place.
Chief, would you like to say a few words?
So, as we've heard from the history of his work history, Howard is a dedicated employee, gave many, many years of his adult life back to the community, whether through the school or through the city as a Parks and Rec employee. But most of all, when I see Howard, and I haven't known Howard nearly as long as Mr. Perino, but he's always positive, super positive, and willing to help and extend a hand to everybody. Still, in his retirement, he's still giving to the members of the community, and I love to see his positive energy, no matter what he's dealt. And I got to say thank you for allowing me to get to know you, and more importantly, allowing me to come to your wedding and be two things. I got to be his best man and his photographer.
Hey, all right.
And super happy that he found someone to share his life with. So, he's been blessed with having Ruth as his wife now, and I'm very, very happy, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I do want to add, Howard just being from the community and from the area, and having the passion for Middletown and the youth, he did make quite a large donation to us for camp scholarships a few years back, and we are still able to give scholarships every summer to numerous children, giving them the opportunity to attend our sports camp because of this large donation that Howard made to us. So we are truly grateful for that donation that Howard gave to us.
I was trying to do the math here. How many years we have here of service from Howard?
Yeah, you're going to come up, Howard? Howard's going to ask right now.
Would you like to say a few words? Thank you, and it's really nice to be here and meet all of you, and you're doing a great job, and I thank you for your commitment and service to our community. Yes, I've known Howard for over 50 years.
I thought it was 50.
And we finally got together, which is wonderful. And yes, he is funny most of the time, and that's what attracted me first to him. So, yes, he loves kids. It's just incredible when we're out and he sees a little kid, that he gets all excited. And so, this is his way of giving back to his community. Thank you.
Awesome.
Step up and say something.
50 years.
Call it right up.
I just can't.
Say thank you. Just say thank you.
Thank you for coming and listening. Thank you so much.
Now, Howard, this isn't a key to the city, but it's a certificate of appreciation from our Board of Education and from our district, so I want you to take this.
Thanks, John.
John, can you just read the certificate? Can you read the certificate to the microphone?
Your certificate of appreciation, this certificate is proudly presented, I'm sorry, certificate is proudly presented to Howard Avery, in appreciation of your dedication, compassion, and service to the youth of our community. Signed by the Superintendent and the Board President, Mr. Edmund Estrada. So, Howard, I'm going to give you a folder, because it's a little bit wet out there, and I don't want you to, I want it kept good, but you've always done a good job. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Just, just one other, just one other word, a couple of other things. Kevin Witt is representing the city also tonight, is the alderman, correct? There you go. And, you know, Raylene Berthoff, I go way back with the Berthoff family. I went to school with Gordy and Preston Berthoff, good, good people and good athletes, too. Excellent athlete. And while I'm at it, guests this evening, we have Dr. Michael Rett. Dr. Michael Rett is a senator from Georgia, so very important position, and Kurt's brother, Dr. Michael Rett.
Brother.
Right, brother.
I'm the bigger brother.
The bigger brother. And we also have Norville Connell here, Dr. Norville Connell, who was appointed this evening to central administration, and congratulations to you, Norville.
He's coming up next. He doesn't know it, but he's coming up next.
Another good man. So, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. And one word, if you haven't been to the Board meetings, we go through this agenda, but we have all the backup material for over a week on this, and we ask any questions. So, thank you so much for representing the city tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we head to our next area of our agenda, as Mr. Perino pointed out, this evening, yep, go ahead and do pictures first, yep.
Yeah, we need to do that picture.
Oh, okay.
Hold it, Kevin.
Thank you, Chief Huwanshu. Thank you, Mr. Avery, again, for everything that you've done on behalf of our, you're one of those points of light in Middletown.
Yes.
Right, good.
Yes, right, good.
So as Mr. Perino had mentioned before we get to our next area, earlier during our action items, we did approve the position of the Administrator of District Resources and Operations, which we have the gentleman who will be filling that position for us moving forward. It'll, it's a sad day and a happy day, all at the same time. So our own Norville Connell from the high school will be transitioning into a new role from a central administration standpoint moving forward. Would you like to come up and say a couple of words on your new adventure here at the Middletown City School District?
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed Board and Middletown community. You know, it's just earlier this evening, I got a text from somebody who I respect dearly and said, congratulations and a full circle moment. And I'm reflecting on that, a full circle moment, because I started out my career in finance and in business, and it was exciting, and it's something that, as a youth, I really liked. But it's nothing like this. This job is aligned to a mission and a vision that's near and dear to me. It's a mission and vision that I wake up each day to, no matter what capacity I'm serving in, I carry it with pride. I see the families that it will impact and the faces that it touch each day. And I've been doing that for so many years here. I am honored, really truly honored, that you even consider me to take on this role, because I know that whatever passion, whatever strength, whatever I have, I'll dedicate to make sure that Middletown will always be the flagship of education in this country. So thank you so much for this chance. Really appreciate it.
I know I'm speaking on behalf of the Board that if you bring the same passion that you did to now your former position, we're going to be in great shape. So we want to thank you for taking the leap of faith with us as well, so good luck.
Thank you so much.
That was so beautifully said. Congratulations, and very well deserved.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next up, the Board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. The public is not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals, and speakers must sign in prior to speaking. Speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. Vice President Romero.
La junta designara una parte de su agenda de reunión para comentarios públicos por un periodo de hasta 40 minutos. A cada persona se le permitirá hasta cuatro minutos. Se le permite al, no se le permite al público discutir temas y/o asuntos que involucren a personas específicas. Las personas deben registrarse y firmar antes de hablar. Las personas no pueden ceder su tiempo a otras personas.
Thank you, Vice President Romero. Would anybody like to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Letters to the Board of Education, there are none, correct? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Monchery, do we have any Superintendent updates? None this evening? Any Board of Education updates? We'll start off with Mr. Perino.
President, sir, I'm going to be very brief because I know that folks are going to Albany. I'm just going to have one quick thing. And it goes back to when Kevin Hipsman, who's coach of, one of our track coaches was here, he was talking about records. And I said, gee, I know of one record that goes back to 2008 that I don't believe was ever broken. And that person is a Middletown person who's working in our school system in the Guidance Department. It's Deanna Knapp. And Deanna Knapp, she set the women's record for shot put. Yes, she did. And here's a shot put, if you don't know it. And when I picked this up, I almost dropped on my foot. There's Deanna Knapp in, she's 2008 graduate of Middletown High School. And what she did is she threw the indoor shot put 37.4 feet, and the outdoor shot put 37.9.5 feet. Can you imagine that? Anybody around the table can do this right now?
No, not me.
How about you, Doc?
I'm sure IT folks are saying, please don't throw that. There's way too many important pieces of equipment.
I'm going to put it right down here.
Hey, could you film that one?
So that's, there's Deanna.
I must be honest, when I saw it, it was first in front of my station here, and the first thing was, I turned to Mrs. Monchery and said, is this thing ticking? Because I didn't know what it was.
And you know, she doesn't look that much different. She has two children and nice family. Linda was on the Board for a number of years. And she, as I said, she's very well respected in the school and in the district. She was given tenure, I think, two meetings ago. So thank you very much, Mr. Schott. I'm done. Done.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Does anyone else have any other updates? Seeing none, we don't have our Student Board Member report yet.
Community updates? Or you just talking?
Okay, that was part of that. You have one?
I know we're doing something new here.
Oh, go ahead.
Kind of combining them.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
All right, yes, I do have a community update. I think we have some pictures to display here. Yes, Love Our City, this is the third year that we had this at Thrall Park. I was hosting this event for the third year. You know, we had a great turnout, had a lot of vendors, a lot of food, a lot of different entertainment. The mayor came out as well, and we presented him with a shirt. So I thought it was really nice, and I just wanted to show you some of the pictures of that event. And we look forward to doing it again next year. Hope that more people can turn out, and thank you very much. Yep, yep, yep.
Anyway, Dr. De Jesus.
Yes, I have community update. I'm waiting for them to put it up. So we have the Warkill National Night Out on, isn't actually next Wednesday, Tuesday, next Tuesday. It's an excellent event. It's a phenomenal event. A lot of the stakeholders, the community come together, and we collaborate to provide things free to the community. You set up a table. If you're a part of the Warkill community, they allow you to set up a table as a vendor, and you come out, there's music, there's giveaways. At least about 50 different tables that are set up there. A lot of things are provided to the children. It's also a social gathering, as we can see from some of the different activities that they'll have there. I know a lot of the kids like the fire truck and to turn the siren on, to turn the siren on, and the police cars that are out there. So come on out and enjoy. And the second community event is a new program in Middletown and Orange County area. Second Chance Counseling is offering art therapy. It is expressive arts, often at times, children have a difficult time, and even some adults in expressing their emotions and their feelings through self-talk, and they do it in other ways. And some of those are acting, some is through singing, some is through expressive arts, through drawing, through sketching, through painting. And so this program is on Mondays and Wednesdays from 4:30 to 6:00. We have collaborated with many of the insurance companies so that the parents do not have to pay out of pocket. The costs will be paid for by a majority of the insurance companies. And it's also a place that if a parent needs respite, that they can bring their children from 4:30 to 6:00 on Monday and Wednesday and go do what they need to do and come back. So that's just some of the, some of the services that will be provided, art therapy, drawing, sketching, theater and play, vocal expression, emotions through coloring. I got to witness one of the events on Monday, which was the emotions through coloring. So it was very fascinating to me. So what the instructor did was she had a piece of paper, and as you colored it, an emotion came out through the coloring of the, under the paper. And then you had to say, well, the kids said what the emotion was, and then they had to describe a time when they felt that feeling. And they were very supportive of each other. This was the group that was from 10 to 13. And I said I'm a gleam off of that in my own sessions. That was very fruitful. Thank you.
Dr. De Jesus, do you have any flyers of that? I'd like to share that with some people in general, in my general community as well.
Yes, I can email it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. De Jesus. Did you have anything, Freddie?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Yes, I have a couple of images also. So this is our fourth annual It Takes a Village BBQ, teamed up with the Middletown Police Department, the Middletown School District, Parks and Rec, of course, the City of Middletown, Middletown Fire Department. There's so many great organizations that have joined on as the years went on. The Middletown Police Department has been steadfast, and since the beginning, along with the Parks and Rec, Middletown School District joined on, I think, the second year we had it. And it's just been an amazing event. We're looking forward to it again. In the years previous, we've had thousands of people come out and just, you know, we've had, the district has offered many excellent things for the youth, sensory activities, and the Parks and Rec face painting, and the Police Department does all the cooking, and it's just a great, great event. We have a stage set up for musical performances and dance step teams this year. As every day goes, we just have more and more events adding to, I'm sorry, performances and activities adding to the event. So this is September 6th, it's a Saturday, at Davidge Park, the Back Pavilions. This is our fourth year. Like I said, we want to thank everybody who's helped out, supporting, and just come out and, you know, pour into our community, which are, you know, you don't see many police departments and Parks and Rec and the school districts that come together like this to form such a great unified event. So that is, once again, Saturday, September 6th. And I have one more. I think there's one more. And if it doesn't come up.
Mr. Wiley's checking over there to see if.
Okay. Okay. And if it doesn't come up, it's no big, okay. So this is now the Middletown National Night Out, which is Tuesday, this Tuesday, August 5th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Thrall Park. Shout out to Stevenson Monchery for giving me a heads up and reminding me, schedule's so crazy, but this is just awesome, like, just as Dr. De Jesus said, community, that's what it's about, you know, as previous to the It Takes a Village BBQ. Pouring back into community with, you know, with the police and our youth, being able to interact with our Police Department and people within the city is just an amazing feeling. I don't remember it much when I was growing up, and to see it, the communication and camaraderie is awesome. So that's this upcoming Tuesday, 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Thrall Park in Middletown, New York. That's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Williams.
Yes.
You know, I remember last year, we had both of these the same time, on the same date last year, the Warkill Night Out, as well as this national Middletown.
They will, yeah, they'll always be because it's national.
So we had to run, run to both of them.
That's it, we hopping around.
But it's going to be like that forever because it's a national night out, so all communities across the country have it at the same time.
Yep.
Great.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, and, you know, thank Alderman Witt as well. He sent it to me via text a couple of minutes ago, so I was going to say the same exact thing, but thank you for everybody. Again, Thrall Park, 5:00 to 8:00, National Night Out, City of Middletown with the Police Department. And really go out, if you're in the City of Middletown, please go out, because Chief Huanchu does amazing stuff with our Police Department. You know, the relationship we have in our community with our Police Department and our school district is amazing, and that's not the same across the country. So we should celebrate that here at Middletown. So that's what I had. Did you have anything? Nothing? So I think we're good to go with our Board of Education updates. We don't have a Student Board Member report. We are actively in the process of completing who our next School Board Representative will be, our student School Board Representative will be, and that person will be sworn in at the beginning of the school year. So we're well ahead of the game. I want to thank Norma Avila for helping us out as part of that process, as well, as well as Central Office and Building Administration. Any other committee reports besides the Policy Committee? I know Mr. Bison's not here. Do we have a date for the next Audit Committee?
October 7th, 5:00 PM.
All right, Tuesday, October 7th, 5:00 PM is the next Audit Committee meeting. And then from a conference perspective, one of the reasons why we're having somewhat of a quick meeting this evening is that several School Board members are headed up to Albany Last page. She is good. Oh, here it is. The Leadership in Education event up in Albany, which is beginning tomorrow, early tomorrow morning through Saturday, and I think we have four School Board members who will be going, be up there as well. So we'll have a report on that particular conference as well moving forward. Does anybody have any other committee reports? Nope? Okay, seeing none. I need a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening.
Go move.
Moved by Mr. Wright, seconded by Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everybody, for coming on out. We'll see you at our next School Board meeting, which is?
Oh, it's written on here.
Thursday, August 14th, my son's birthday. How can I forget? Have a nice evening, everybody.